It gives 10, I'm going to.
Gosh.
I had a call to need to order and this isn't on the agenda, but I thought um. I'm sure all of you know, but Craig Pruitt passed away since our last meeting. He served on the board for twenty nine years and we just recently honored him at a at a board meeting and. So glad we had the opportunity to do that now, but I thought we might just take a moment of silence in in honor of Craig. Thank you so much. Okay, the first item of business is Craig took many of these oaths of office. So I will go ahead and administer the oath to everyone else and then Tiffany is going to mine. So we'll start with, why don't we start with our newest board?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So Diana, you would just stand. And raise your right hand and I will, I will do a call and response for you. Okay. I state your name.
Diana Rasmussen.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will, oh. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Phoenix Talent School District.
And policies of the Phoenix Talent School District.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of a school board member.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of a school board member to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Yeah, it's me.
Go.
We can get them on the other way around. I'm happy.
And we were joking Nancy, I'm sorry there's not a hundred and fifty people here to watch you this time, but um. That was a lot of people to watch you once last time.
Well, they played two hundred, some people.
Yeah, it reminds me.
I don't know.
That's why I was shocked because I was like, do not take those people from me. Here's the boss, literally one hundred.
Alright.
Fun times, fun times.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Nancy, that's the human kindness.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Phoenix Talent School District.
And the policies of the Phoenix Talent School District.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities of a school board member to the best of my ability.
Discharge the responsibilities of a school board member to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
So we've done another four years. I have to face this way because I gave her my thanks.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay. I state your name.
I, Polly Fairham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Phoenix Talent School District.
And the policies of the Phoenix Talent School District.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of a school board member.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of a school board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Tiffany's going to mine.
Hi, Rick.
Hi.
Hi, Mike, okay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
The policies of the Phoenix Towns School District.
And the policies of the Phoenix Towns School District.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
I will, during my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The responsibilities of a school board member to the best of my ability.
The responsibilities of a school board member to the best of my. Hey. Did we get everybody? Okay, don't want to miss anyone and then cause problems for the. Legitimacy of the rest of the meeting, okay. Um, next item is election of board chair. Do we have any nominations for? Board chair for twenty five, twenty six.
I'll make your nomination.
Polly. Okay, Polly's been nominated. We have any other nomination?
I'll nominate my candidate.
Okay, thank you, Polly. Any others? Okay, um, I think probably the easiest way to do this is just as we go around, just. Say Polly or Michael unless you have a thought.
I just have like a point of order or thought. Can we verify that both of you, when I was at another meeting, the nomination, some of the people nominated didn't actually want it, so I wanted to verify that. You both.
Who wanted before we started.
When did we have a discussion about who wants to or who doesn't?
Yeah, thanks for bringing it up. Well. Polly, will you accept the nomination?
No. Oh.
There we have it.
Well, there we go, yeah, yeah. I'm getting ready to vote for you. Okay, two nominations have been made, one has been respectfully denied. So um, I think what we'll do then is just, um, we'll just do a roll call vote and. So Nancy.
Or how?
For me, I'm the only one. Is there any other nominations?
Just Nancy, what you talked about. Like, what?
Oh, this is good. Keep me on my toes. Okay, Nancy, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Diane.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Alright, I abstained, thank you all so much. By the way, I think this is the last year I can do that in a row, or so, somebody else start thinking about it now. Um, okay, uh, election of vice chair, we have any nominations for vice chair?
I have both.
Rick, Rebecca? Rebecca's been nominated, any other nominations?
Polly.
And I think it would be good to offer the same thing.
Yes.
Yeah, would you accept the nomination?
Rebecca?
Um, yes.
Yay.
Polly?
I would as well, okay.
Alright, so um. Well, I'll do, I'll go around and just say Rebecca or Polly and Denise, I'll, I'll try to keep track, but if you get out, we can. One second. Okay, Nancy?
I'll go with Rebecca.
You too? Rebecca, thank you.
Rebecca?
I'll vote for Polly.
Oh, Diana?
Polly.
Okay, Rick?
Rebecca.
Don?
Rebecca.
I have a decision here. If I vote for you at the time.
But she didn't do it.
Oh, yeah, you can do that. Okay, thank goodness. How I can discount the, cast the siding, but that's really great, guys, thank you for that. Okay, Polly?
I vote for Rebecca.
Oh, okay, sure, thank you. Alright, I vote for Polly for posterity, Rebecca's the vice chair, congratulations.
Yay. So exciting.
Alright. This is the most controversial stuff we do here.
So part of virtual.
Okay, um, now we have a cinch of positive. We have a cinch of problem. We don't, I don't think we have any staff here, but.
You have something left.
Go for it.
Um, I was excited to see the school buses and the kiddos lining up for summer school, and they seemed really excited too. I was, that's fun, in the morning, see those little guys getting all ready and excited to go.
That just started this week, right?
Yeah, Monday, I'm not, I'm, I know one of the teachers of Senate Teaching Fellowship is like, so excited to have it start again, so.
They seem really like jazzed up too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is summer school running listening to us, mightn't have.
Yes, it's all together.
Okay. Justin?
I'd like to say, this is the most positive group that I've ever. Been invited into or whatever, and I'd like to thank Mike and a member of mine who came out. Denise has been absolutely incredible, getting me four handed, and today I got something besides a Chromebook. David, he helped me set it up because I was very frustrated with the Chromebook.
Okay.
The third graders probably just whip right through. Anyway, feels good to be here.
Well, congratulations and welcome, excited to have you here. Any other positives? Okay, um, citizens' comments, do you have anyone who wishes to speak before the board? In an official capacity? Okay, uh, superintendent report, Tiffany's here with us today. So please go ahead, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Barry is on a plane right now, traveling back from his trip to DC, so it is an honor to be stuck in this spot, so thank you for the opportunity. Uh, there are some things in your packet that Mr. Barry put in, but I'll just run over really quick, the first being a request for proposals for RFP. For an additional preschool site at Orchard Hill Elementary. This is still preliminary, and Mr. Barry and Mrs. Soder are still thinking about if they're going to um, have released that RFP. And they'll be available at the next school board meeting, if you have any questions about that. Just there for your information and review ahead of time.
I love that there's such a huge need for preschool and, oh my goodness, yeah.
I was just gonna say. I have a question, do we know about how many people are needing this or wanting this or like head count?
Kelly Soder would be better to, to answer that question, but I do know that of our Southern Oregon Head Start areas, the, the one that we have currently at Orchard Hill. Has the longest waiting bus, so it's a popular area, very close to the hospitals and people like parents and boyfriends. So that one, we do have those.
Great.
So this will be in addition to Head Start, oh, got it.
The other thing in your packet is a surplus form, and it might look a little confusing of why there are so many active panels. Um, and so that is at our high school, we replaced all the pulley pan boards. Um, that can no longer be updated with the solder, with new active panels to match the other brands throughout our district. That have free staff training and customer service with that, but I just want to take that opportunity to thank our maintenance department. For mounting and installing and our IT department, thanks Canyon's here, for configuring all those panels, they have to do it one by one. Um, it takes a lot of time, so thank you to them. Uh, the other thing in your packet is the Amoresco solar report, just for your information. But it's an opportunity uh, for me to reflect on the importance of having the solar panels, just yesterday I was talking with Mr. McCauley about that. Um, and to have in talent, two buildings that are seismically retrofitting. And now have solar panels and will have the battery backups provide power in the event of an earthquake or unfortunately, a wildfire, which we're all too familiar with. After we were talking about that, because he was doing his Department of Energy report, Mr. McCauley, um, we got a phone call from the Red Cross. Um, asking if we would be a site available for uh, comprehensive sheltering. Uh, in the case of the ashland fire that's going on right now, in case it grows or we have other incidents this summer, so we are really pleased to be able to say yes to that. And have um, an opportunity to serve our community. Then speaking of that, right after I had gotten off the phone with that and was trying to leave the district office, at six I got a call from the Oregon Department of Forestry. Um, they were setting up by uh, fire camp for that fire in Ashland, um, and asked to use our corporate field, so Mr. McCauley and I met with them today, we did a tour. And they will be setting up first thing in the morning. For that fire, yeah, it will be on that multi-curved field, which is in between the baseball um, field and the bus bar, where the bar, there's that grassy area. If they need to expand, hopefully they don't, hopefully they're able to get that fire out within, you know. The next few days, um, if they need to expand or further on in the season, we have our, the rest of our field, which is undeveloped. Which they said they're used to, they just need a flat spot, um, they hate it, but it's a really an ideal um, spot, it's a little further away from Ashland than they wanted, but um. It's off the main road, which is a county road, not very populated, and we have the ability just to, you can go in one entrance and access, exit, so the big vehicles don't have to backup. And that's um, very nice. But um, we notified our baseball coach, and so they'll still be able to practice baseball out there and such, they. They'll just probably have fans, spectators, a little one with a firefighter set in it. But I want to let you know that um, tomorrow morning, early in the morning, they'll be setting up. We also notified first student for bus barn because they'll be. They'll see us all. So um, it's, as we approach the five year anniversary of the Almeida fire. Um, it was just uh, the time that I feel like we can show our.
Yeah.
Thanks and gratitude to our firefighters.
Yes.
It's nice to be able to do that.
Huge credit to Tiffany for um. Allowing that space to be utilized, I mean, you know. Unfortunately, when disasters strike, it's so good to be brilliant, to be good folks and be a good partner. And I'm just incredibly proud.
County emergency operations.
Yeah.
Um, they, we talked with them yesterday as well, um, and um, you know, just. The Almeida fire was an unfortunate event, but one thing that came out of that was really close relationships. Um, with, you know, just critical partners of ours as a school district, and they're a great partner, so one of them.
Um, any questions? Thank you so much, yeah, Tiffany called me e- earlier today to let me know about the. The uh. Color property and the Red Cross thing, and just, that's why we. That's why we retrofitted the buildings, so one, one big reason why, um. And it definitely feels good to have our spaces utilized for the good purpose.
Can I have one more thing? I have a question, John, Michaela, but uh, we were doing the tour, uh, we planned to meet at maybe this morning because the Department of Forestry was meeting at seven. Um, we needed to get the contract out and such, and before they even left, uh, the crew, our facilities crew was mowing the field. Marking our irrigation, so they were just all set and ready to go, just, you know. In that, that's like an emergency response to support our community, that, it was like, I was really impressed how quickly they acted, so it was sweet. So another food system.
Not surprised. Um, okay, um, next we have a program report from the city of Phoenix, Zach Moody's here, thanks for joining us, Zach. Excited to hear what you have going on with the city.
Alright, well, thank you, I did provide a memo to you all, um. Very similar memo to this we provided to the council. Back in the end of the year, uh, really trying to lay out uh, where we are with our strategic planning, as we talked about the fire, uh, we went through a strategic planning process. Uh, right after the fire, uh, four years later, five years later, I guess now, um, we are through that strategic plan, for the most part, there's some things that we have left to do. But it was very, it was very much a plan of reaction more than just um, community input, it was, what do we need to do as a community to uh, rebuild? Uh, and get things moving and, and do the things that we needed to from a. A jurisdictional level, and so now with that being finished, we're moving on to trying to get more community input. And, you know, we've, we've done alright, um, you know, we did a park master plan, um, just recently, with the most surveys that, that the university of Oregon had had in a long time. Um, for that type of, that type of survey event. Um, so we had some pretty, we set the bar pretty high for that, and we're, we're not quite as, uh, we're not quite to the bar that we want to be at for community input, and we have. Done three community outreach meetings, uh, both in Spanish and English, um. We did two and then we did a third one just to make sure we didn't miss anybody that couldn't come during the, the weekday, we did one on the weekend. Um, we've done a survey, um, and thanks to uh, your, your tech people here, um, we've sent the, I think, thinking that went out, you probably all know. Uh, we sent the text message out and an email out with the survey in there, uh, both in English and Spanish for people to forward on and to take the survey yourself. Um, so we, we are here today asking for more help. Um, our council pushed back their strategic planning session until August because we wanted to get more input. Um, currently now we have a, just over a hundred surveys, um, received and we had about forty people show up at those meetings. So, um, and we experienced a lot with, you know, people getting overloaded with the meetings and, you know, public involvement and, you know. Some things are more exciting than others, and our master plan people are excited because that's something that they, you know, they do. Regularly, right, strategic planning at the city level is, you know, kind of like planning for transportation, nobody really wants to do it, everybody complains about it, but nobody wants to. And so, what we're hoping for today, um, and, and this just kind of lays out when those, when those meetings were. Um, and kind of what it is that we're looking to do, and really when, uh, when the council's going to try to meet again to do this, the council's going to meet for two days. Um, once we have all of our input and then try to come up with a really community minded uh, strategic plan that. Um, takes into consideration some of our new plans, like our master plan and some of our newer growth areas. Many of you probably know that, you know, we've expanded over the North Phoenix Road all the way to Campbell Road, and we've expanded on Highway ninety nine all the way to Glenwood. We're currently in the process of doing another urban growth foundation expansion out on War Heath Road, um, so we're growing, um, and we need to plan for that growth. But we do want to take a, you know, a holistic approach to getting people involved, um. So my ask today is, I've provided the memo with some links and I'll send the, I'll send this memo in digital format to, um, to Denise so she can pass on, but we, I mean, you can type in the. The, it's a short enough link, you can just type it in, but um, if you want to send it on to people, um, or just grab the, um. It's kind of a little varied on the city's website now because of all the fire stuff, we've been posting all kinds of emergency stuff online, so, uh. So, or forwarding this to anybody that you know, um, you know, within the district, uh, the district as a whole uses our facilities, we want people to come. From, you know, outside the area to use our facilities, so we have, even with Park Master Plan, we reached out to people that, uh, weren't necessarily residents. Uh, of the city to see, you know, how we could benefit them with our parks facilities, so trying to do the same thing with the city. So, um, yeah, so that's really the ask, and I'm, I'm here to answer any questions, um, so really what we're trying to do is really hit on what, what it is the community wants, we've heard, you know. Quite a few things such as, you know, and I, and getting going back to the parks because people are excited about that. Uh, you know, trying to get more economic development around our park systems and doing uh, more event, more events um, in the park system and not. Not just the standard, you know, the Easter egg hunts and those types of things, but I believe there's a movies in the park or a, uh, something, that, that type of music in the park, uh, coming, uh. Gosh, in a couple of weeks, maybe, um, and so, just trying to get those things and then, you know, we're, we're also building, um, on our civic center wetland area down behind the civic center, we're. Working on a, a project to uh, restore those wetlands and create a walkable space for people around the entire wetland facility. Those types of things attract people, um, to the area and we're trying to continue to bring people here, we want the commercial redevelopment, commercial redevelopment brings more residences here. Uh, vice versa, so, uh, so we're hoping that all of your connections, um, and, and the connections of those that you know. Can help us get to a better survey mark than what we're at currently, uh, and so. Probably, we're probably end up ending the survey right around the beginning of August, maybe, maybe the first week of August, but. Uh, we have to give ourselves a little bit of time and process the information and really kind of understand so that we can take a, a good approach to the council. But, uh, yeah, that's, that's what our ask is, and hopefully you can all hold us up, answer any questions.
I have a question, like, is there a post from City of Phoenix about this that we could share on our socials, um?
Yeah, I'll have to go find it.
Okay.
Like I said, it was, it was actually on our, uh, we have a slide deck on the homepage, and that slide deck transfers between, you know, four or five slides, but. We've had, um, a couple of different emergency management things that we've had posted up there, and it's kind of that, it kind of ran things off the back of it, so. Let me see if I can find it and I'll send that to you, and if not, I'll recreate it again tomorrow and, and get someplace where we can. We can do that, there, there actually, you know what I'll also do, I think that there's a QR code too.
I was wondering about like, putting it down at the fudery and making moxie brew and pucks and thinking like, let's some places.
We did, we did go through and hand out those, so there are, there are flyers with, um, uh, QR codes on them. And the one thing we didn't do with this one that we did with Park Master Plan is, well, we had a parade, it was about the same time the homecoming parade was going on, so we, we printed out a thousand business cards. With the QR code on it, and we just walked up and down the street handing out cards, but we don't have that same opportunity this time, but we have been to businesses and some of our council members have been to businesses and. And left those same types of cards for people, for them to hand out to people that come in, but, um, I'll send whatever I have, and you can just forward it on it. Uh, whether it's a QR code or whether it's a flyer that you could pass on, um, or a link to the website, that would be great.
So impressive. And Joe, is he involved in this? Has said something out there?
Yeah, so Joe, Joe's worked with us a lot, I just, I'm not, my kids don't go to school in this district anymore, so I don't get that text message anymore to know. I'm leaning on Joe to make sure it got done and, yeah, yeah, so, um, but that's a good, um. That, that's a good resource for us because it's a very large group of people and, uh, you know. We don't want to inundate people with stuff all the time, but this, we feel like is important, but, and, and the survey's really short, that's the other thing, the Heart Master Plan survey was like, literally like ten pages.
Oh, boy.
This is like, this is like maybe two or three, maybe like ten questions, so, pretty quick, and it gives you an opportunity to input some, some text in there as well.
Great, well, I commend you all for, you know, wanting to. Seek more feedback and not just taking, you know, what you've gotten so far, um, which is, you know, pretty much the norm, but, yeah, that's great, I'm happy to help. Have you done any Georgia tour outreach, I know that's.
But I was thinking too, like all the houses that are together behind that.
So what I will say is our counselors were very ambitious and, um, they decided that they were going to do that.
Yeah.
Don't know how that worked out. Yeah, uh, there, there was a big desire to do that, um, and, and they had the resources to do it, uh, from a staffing level, we do, we didn't have that time, but they wanted to go out because. They were looking for fifty percent, uh, survey results and, um, that was a little high, so, um, you know, we, we had ten percent, um, you know, with a very good plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I mean, it's so low, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, the people that we got before did represent a really good, uh, segment of the population, uh, whether it was, you know, aging in place folks, whether it was high school folks, whether it was just. Those right that, you know, in the middle age category, um, we feel like we got, uh, a pretty good run at it, but.
Yeah.
Uh, and we got a lot of good information from that that we will use for the strategic plan, but it's not all about parks, it's, it's about what this, you know, what the residents want to see, do they want to see. You know, new paved streets, do they want to see, you know, more econ, you know, more economics, do they want to see more apartment complex, you know, those sorts.
Yeah. Wow, I think the growth and the recovery so far in the city of Phoenix has been phenomenal, so.
Fantastic.
Appreciate all the work that you've done and, yeah, happy to help however we can.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Zach?
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, appreciate you.
Yeah, no problem, happy to come to more and give more information on some.
I love it when we get the updates like you've done.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I think it would be good, probably at the beginning of the year, we, we will have known if we're going to get awarded, um, we, we applied for a. Um, six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar grant to do the park restoration, um, and so we're going up to present Salem at the end of this month. So there's, there'll be all kinds of good updates, um, we'll have some zoning code amendments, there's some state mandates coming down for zoning code amendments for housing that, that we're. We're obligated to do, and I, I say obligated, it kind of, you know, you know, it's, it's tough, um, but we're going to be doing those things and it'll be, um, you know, there's a lot of other things coming down the pipe, so. Uh, it'd be good to come and give them that or by show presentation.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Love to have you.
Perfect, well, thank you, thank you so much.
Good luck when you get it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be what I did.
Alright, well, great, um, next up is the consent agenda, um, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Thank you, Diana. Um, any objections? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Next we have information and discussion, and the first item is a legislative OSBA update.
Thank you, first I want to congratulate Michael, you guys made.
Thank you. First, I want to congratulate Michael. You guys may have seen the article today that he is our. Yeah, new contracted. I don't know the whole file, but.
Board develop, yeah, board board development trainer.
Trainer.
Specialist contractor.
And I am super excited. Um OSBA decided a while back, we did a survey that um. One size fits all doesn't always work when people come down from Salem. Times um work you don't understand and and they sometimes do and sometimes don't, so. It's great that we're having, I think it will save districts money too, so that there's not as much travel. So I'm really excited um to have Michael on board and um can't wait to have more trainings in this area. I think it will be. Um really great, so.
Very excited. Thank you. I appreciate it.
That was the first thing. Um another thing is I want to give OSBA staff um for legislative within busy, hard legislative year. And um they really is Adrian is rather new and Stacy was new and their partnership with COSA, I've talked with Brent about it. Was just phenomenal. They did an advocacy day. They haven't an advocacy days in like five years. And I just want to give them kudos that they worked really hard on this legislative um session. In the packet, you probably saw the governor's executive order on cell phones. Um my opinion is. Ah um we worked really hard. We as in. OSBA and I know that I had several conversations with legislators about. Um cellphone, a- as you guys know, we are not in compliance because we don't have an official policy, having it in the handbook like we do. Um I advocated a lot of how important that was for flexibility, having in the handbook was actually more flexible than having it. So um OSBA and COSA is working on what this actually means, what our policy has to look like and some other things, so we. Will keep you informed. They'll probably talk about it at summer conference. Um federal funds, as you know, that's been delayed and some have been cut. We're still waiting to hear more. Um I will let you know how that goes as well. Jeff Golden is having his town hall. On uh to Saturday at ten AM. Um in his newsletter, which I sent out to everybody in the region, it talks about what he's going to talk about, which is a lot of stuff, but he's open to talk about whatever you want. As you may know, Jeff Golden um came to a legislative reception, I think it was the last year or the year before. And he finally got this aha moment that some things that were passed. Actually cost money and took time away from other things when, you know, he was like, wait. When I pass a curriculum, you have to take something away. And I'm like, yeah, the students don't have a lot of free time just hanging out. So if you pass, you know, mandated curriculum for this, we have to find the time somewhere. And so he finally got this aha moment. He's been really, really good. Yeah, yeah. Um so he's been really, really good at keeping his word and he voted no. It came nine, um Senate Bill nine sixteen with the unemployment um benefits came in front of him twice and he. Only two Democrats voted no on that and he voted no twice and and stole his ground. So very good because he knew. That was going to be a challenges, challenge for districts, um and it could possibly be a long time for students to um be out of school and so. If you go to his town hall or see him, that might be a good opening, thanking him for supporting us and. And learning more about schools and support and supporting us. Um. As you, oh, summer conference. Sorry, I'm trying to go by summer conference. Um the schedule, the attended schedule is up. If you go to there. One of the highlights I want to say is they're having the board chair cafe in person. And that is a good thing for board chairs and vice chairs. I I used it when I was a board chair and it was really, really helpful. And so that's something that would be good. Plus, the color caucus meeting is going to be the rule caucus meeting, the prime. Meet, it's not caucus, but the committee, and so there's lots of things going on, so just make sure that you, you know. Look and go, oh, because sometimes I was looking and they're kind of hidden because they're like after hours or whatever, so um. As you all know, Sarah is no longer on our board, which means LPC spot is open. In August, OSBA will be sending out notification that that spot will be open and I believe in September. Openings and you can apply to be in that. To apply, the board will vote for your nomination and then all the people nominated, all the boards will vote. So they'll be voting twice on who that LPC person will be for our region. Um. So that will be important. At the summer conference, we are having an LPC meeting, so if anyone's interested in. What LPC, which is Legislative Policy Committee, and that consists, our region has. I'm automatically on it because I'm a board director and then there's a, there's an LPC spot open as well. So if that's something you might be interested in. I would recommend going to the meeting. I get to chair it, so you get to see me. Um also. There might be a board of directors position open too. Um we, I will know in September if there's one in our spot, so. But that probably will not be voted on. That will probably be appointed in the first of the year. And then COSPA, which is another organization, um NSBA, the National School Board Association. Had some hiccups and another association, COSPA, and I can't remember what it stands for. Coalition of School Board Members and Association, something like that. Um they are having an advocacy in. DC, I let OSBA know. The scheduling is kind of weird and OSBA is not going, but I just thought I should let. This board know that it's something that is um happening just and that is all I have. Sorry for um for OSBA.
No, that's great. Um. I suppose we should talk about this now and maybe you can weigh into it, weigh in on this sort of. So we're but um. The. The executive order on devices. I know that ODE is working on something. Is OSBA going to put together a policy or a model policy?
OSBA is going to be putting together a model policy. Once they find out, there's a lot of questions.
Right.
And um I don't know if last I knew and I and I don't know, um sometimes they have, uh. I forgot the name, just slipped. They have like a committee on the, it's called rule, I think it's called rules. So if bill passes and they have rules, so I don't know if O- ODE is going to have a rules committee. Talk about this executive order or if it's just coming, they do for legislation, but since it's an executive order. I don't know if they're planning to do it or the governor is just like, do what I say. It's it's like confusing and so OSBA is kind of waiting um to know if we're going to have a chance to have input. If we're going to have a chance, hopefully we'll have a chance to answer questions and is we're really working with ODE. But the last conversation I had, there was more questions than answers, unfortunately.
I'm just thinking about. The nightmare of how like something like this started on October thirty-four or January first even midway through the school year and if you wanted to comment on that, I mean. I have a lot of thoughts. I mean, I I support us. I think we need to. The conversation, we've already had it. I mean, we we had the policy and played, not policy, but the the high school chose to implement something last year and. Think there were some positive things, but what we were advocating for with the legislature was. Local control and flexibility, especially depending on this building and things like that. So I mean, we could go down the path of. I don't know if there's any planned legal challenges to this, like do do people feel like the governor has the authority to do what she did? Um. But but I mean, that's one conversation. The other conversation is just implementing this. I would imagine our school. Officials would prefer we have something in place, start the school year, but I don't know. Do you have a comment on that? Yeah, yeah.
Um so it's the board policy by the end of October and then implementation in the schools by January. And I know um, you know, whether there are districts opposed or supportive of of this executive order. Um we're in a better spot because we already have policies and policies in place. But one of the issues of starting later is that we do have students with medical conditions or disabilities that need their phones. For example, some of our students with diabetes monitor their glucose and blood blood sugar levels on their phones. Um and so there needs to be time and place to um do five oh four meetings or we do IEP meetings. And so that was a concern there of like, does everybody have to get that done by, you know, August? And so it does give um some of our our specialized teams time to do those meetings and.
Right.
Figure out how to implement policies that would support all students, including those who legitimately need their phones on their. On their person, so.
I mean, that was my other question is, do we even have the capacity to handle? Because, you know, there's an exemption process, so. I imagine we're going to be getting a lot of exemption requests and um think about how to handle all that.
We've, we've gone through it. We did that last year. It was probably with our rollout at the high school. Um there was the, once I had heard about it, it was like, what about our students on five oh four and IEDs? So we have like a blanket statement and then all of our case managers really quick had meetings, but we did get a lot of requests. From families that wanted a five oh four plan for protection without a medical condition. Um but in our district, we've already lived through that this last year. And so I think we're uh it will impact us as as much, but I also want to think about neighboring school districts and such that will feel an impact. Um by this executive order. But we should be pretty close, be okay.
And the question also is, what if we jumped? What if you wait into, I mean, because obviously we have, we would have our. We would have something in place, we'd have the handbooks, right? And so what if we continued to what we had in place until the school year? What would be the? What would happen, right? Um because we would still not, we would still be following. So there's a lot, like again, there's a lot of questions. Um on, is this enough time? Is what would happen if you if you said, look, we're going to continue with. The way we are doing it now, we feel like that is sufficient for our community and our students. I don't know. The like again, there's a lot of questions and you're right, bigger districts or even smaller districts that don't have the staff to implement. Um this, it could be, it could be. So I'll keep you informed and I'm sure it is going to be brought up several times at summer conference.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, obviously? Um. Somewhat personal, but but my family, we had a chance to visit Washington DC and we got stopped by Senator Wyden's office and. They didn't recognize me, so I'm a little disappointed out there. Oh, way back. Well, we got a Capitol tour from one of the interns and the girls got to sit in the finance committee of. They they just and um they sang Bare Necessities in the microphone. I think I think the interview was reg writing showing. But it was really cool to, if you if you haven't had a chance to visit DC and. Check out the Capitol and Rotunda and everything, it was really, really cool, so I would highly recommend.
Look at the song for them. That is so perfect for the.
Oh, yeah, that's their, yeah, that's.
Soundtrack there that.
Yeah.
It's hard listening.
Yeah, uh but it was good to see the senator, even though he didn't recognize me. Okay, uh and then Brent, let me mention that Brent, but Brent was actually there advocating for the district and for public ed um. At the, what was the name of that? It was.
The AASA, so Association of.
Cool.
No, the super, that supermen is.
Okay, yeah. It was specific for advocating, so yeah, it was good. He had some productive meetings, I heard.
So good, I can't wait to hear.
Yeah. So awesome. Um okay, um next we have declaration of IT circuits. I think we. Talked about this already, so any questions on that? Three quarters. Um, okay. This is also you, Tiffany, uh report on restraint and seclusion.
In your packets, I mean, you have our annual report, see it's viewer, don't we, that? Um which is always our goal. And but we did have a seclusion that generally we don't do, we've probably heard about that, but there was one situation. That happened. I do want to just uh reiterate though, I said before, we do not have in our district. Um what's called seclusion cells, rooms specifically made for secluding students. Um other districts do, there's a separate report for that, like a small room. We don't have it, but anytime there's a student alone in a room, it's considered a a seclusion. So but it wasn't a a room design for that.
Are some of these restraint incidents, are they recurring or are they like? I mean, like the same student?
We had one student that was recurring, so five different students with six incidents. Um involved, so um generally there are younger students as we're getting to know and understand their triggers and um. Support that we can provide for them. We always, uh by law, but we always do it, um we use physical restraint. As a last resort and that is part of our training. We only use people that have CPI or Crisis Prevention Institution um training. And uh we always tell the parent by the end of the day is our requirement with a guardian of the restraint. And we have what we call a deep briefing meeting within twenty-four hours. And in that meeting, the big discussion is how we prevent this for meeting to happen again. That could be uh bringing in our school psychologists to write a behavior plan. Um what kind of supports we can provide for that child, so uh it's nice to see that we don't have too many reoccurring incidents.
Do you have to have physical restraint? Do you have to?
Yeah, these are all physical restraints that we that are forced upon um a a child to restrain them, prevent their movements. Again, we use CPI, which is um one of two allowable restraint systems in the state of Oregon. And uh we do training, it's an eight hour training for a person's initial first time and then every other year we have an additional four hour training. Um part of that training, the majority of it, I would even say eighty percent of it is on de-escalation. So um how do we de-escalate when a person, more than just a child, um is uh elevating? And try to get, prevent that aim and then how to safely restrain without harming the student or the staff member. Um and we practice that often.
Cool.
Yeah.
So you just mentioned it. For clarification, when it says resulting in an injury and there's zero, that means no injury to child or staff?
Correct, yeah.
Is that an injury throughout the course of a restraint or seclusion? Is how that works?
Yes, it could be anything from like a scratch, but sometimes like nails aren't done correctly or um. Uh we had last year, I think we had an injury that during a restraint, a staff member got bit because, you know, your arm goes to. A face, so that resulted in an injury. Um so we haven't had severe injuries, but um occasionally an injury happens. But if done correctly, it's to prevent injury. That would increase bruising or anything else, so we, all of our staff members did them appropriately.
And this includes K through twelve?
Yep, this actually includes preschool through age twenty-one for our transition program, our eighteen year old students, so. Um I did learn this year when we have a preschool, that we report both to the Department of Education, to our school board and to the Department of Early Learning. There's additional reporting if it happened to a a preschooler as well. Um so we do share with our school board. This is posted on our website and we report all uh restraints and seclusions in a in a system. To the Department of Education as well. And all of them come through my desk too. I reviewed every single one, so.
Any questions? Uh thank you so much. Um next is um annual agenda items. So um is there anything on this list that you feel is missing or do we want to talk about the timing of? Are, is there anything, Denise, that we talked about along the way that you feel like?
I mean, I made changes as we discussed the different timelines and stuff last year.
Great.
Or this year that will now go into next year. Highlights are more just for me as. A reminder on where to put them and that next step, but I think I got everything, but definitely that's why I want you to review it, because.
Um, one of the things that I think this year we did. Do evaluation, superintendent evaluation meetings. I'm trying to see, just wanna make sure I don't miss again.
Training, and then we have an executive stuff.
We. We had a meeting where we discussed, just as a board. And then we, and then um we had another meeting, we had a meeting where we, remember we arrived at consensus for all the items. And then, and then we met with Brent to share, so that's the only thing I think that we might need to change. Cause that seemed to work well, and although I think at first probably like, oh, you're having a meeting. Talk about me without me there, um, I think it actually provided some really good, rich dialogue and. It's kind of a necessary part of this new process that we're using, so we might need to just look at that and figure out when.
So do you know where you want me to have that second meeting, or like we did this time, I don't know when that was?
Um, yeah. Maybe you can look, I don't really remember Denise.
February is.
That was a few months ago.
Kristen Miles, well, it says superintendent evaluation, first meeting March fifth. And then I don't see where.
Yeah.
February coordinate with OSBA Kristen Miles on the way in to send the board of the superintendent evaluation workbook to complete by, um, which is question marks.
And it does have it in there twice, at the end of February and then March.
Plus, we're doing the targeted feedback too, so we might just need to look at that whole.
Okay, I'll put a note for two meetings.
Does that might add some points to it, so.
And then for November, um, I think we decided last year to do like a work. Session in November where we would discuss OSBA stuff, but then we also had some other. Um, I don't know what we called it, uh, and I don't see that on there, and I don't know if we wanna do that again, but I remember um. That that was kinda nice, cause we had a whole bunch of ideas coming back from OSBA and plus, there was other things that kinda bubbled up. You know, once schools start to play, oh, yeah, we put in there like a work session.
Are these dates, I know you updated the, are these dates updated for? So like if it says November thirteenth, that's November thirteen twenty-five?
Yep.
Okay.
It is, yeah, November thirteenth is a regular meeting, and then November twentieth, we have a board work session.
Okay, okay.
So do I, do I need to add something, I'm sorry, in November?
No, I didn't see the November twentieth work session showing on this calendar, so that's my bad.
I can put a note here for work session.
Add the work sessions on this list.
Probably on the work calendar.
Oh, yeah.
But was there something specific?
No, I just didn't see it, I just, I didn't, yeah.
I was putting OSBA special for for my note, overlaying it.
I just didn't see it on this one, sorry.
No, it's all good.
Cause we kinda list some of them, but not all, cause there's a meeting, that would be on another calendar too. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is really good though Denise, thank you.
Yes, this is so.
Thank you for adding to it as you go. Just reflecting on how this has grown in my five years, um, so, yeah. Any, any other thoughts come into mind?
I'm gonna need a glossary.
Yeah.
So write, write it down, and then you can always talk about it.
Yeah.
Ask us and ask, I don't know what that means. What's that? Oh, like when we're here? Yeah, ask, ask, I don't understand what that was, or what does that acronym mean?
Especially if someone shoots an acronym out at you, yeah, feel free.
Well, I waited long enough, I got most of it here, but SRO report in October, what's?
Oh, yeah, and.
I just have something, I don't like how it says ATI, it was ACC. Or it's now, yeah, or it's a community charter school, it's in November, I'm a board agenda.
Oh, yeah, that's our review. Technical institute.
Yeah, now I'm actually one community charter, or Armadillo community charter school.
Thank you. Well, where do we put the yard sales for earning money to support the district when all the vending?
Oh, awesome, oh, that's, oh, yeah, I know, we'll. We'll have those. Um, okay, well, if you, I mean, we still have time, this is just a, you know, initial, so if something. Sticks out, comes to mind, please let me or Denise know, and we'll make sure when we get the rest of it. Um, and with that, um, the next item is the summer board meeting topics. And that is going to be, what's that again? The meeting?
Uh, it's our draft agenda, so it is, um, July twenty-fourth.
July twenty, oh, that's coming up, okay. Um.
So I have the draft agenda.
Okay, great, that's some, yeah.
And so it's whatever you want to change, so.
We have a report from our community forestry. For superintendent evaluation planning. Over, any assignments? Guiding principles. I think it would be good, especially with a new member, bringing the operating agreements. Um, and maybe we could just do a overview of, um. Of, um, just how our operate agreement and. Uh, valuation systems flow throughout the year, including the strategic plan. Like our quarterly updates and things like that, just to give, just a refresher for all of us, but the, for the benefit of. For Diana's benefit, just to help orient her with the cadence of the year in terms of. How that those things flow, I think would be good, in addition to the guiding principles.
I was thinking of the same thing.
Good, cool. What else?
I did pick up a, a little handout, there was only one copy of, and I thought. Does that get reviewed every year, or is that something that's kind of?
Oh, which, which was it?
It was like our five-year plan, or the district, what was it, we call it the five-year plan, the strategic. Strategic plan, yeah, we just updated it, oh, okay, right, or was that twenty-four to twenty-seven, when was that, twenty-three to twenty-seven? We just updated it, yeah, we just updated it, so, yeah.
Yeah.
And we have a committee that updates it as well, like it's a, it's a process, it's not just like.
Right, we don't do it the next meeting.
Right, right, it's a process, it's a committee with input and all that, just just to let you know.
Operating, our guiding principles, strategic plan, and um operating agreements. Superintendent evaluation, uh, board self-evaluation, just just a. Just an overview of those things, I think would be good.
I'm in a little bit, but.
Anything else that we talked about for the special meeting, is it a special meeting? Or we, summer four planning sessions?
Yeah, I think something else.
It'd be called a pottery retreat, but that makes it sound.
I do not like that name.
Cause that's not fun. We don't have a lot of fun.
Suddenly I am just, we're not, I'm going swimming. Uh, yeah.
I don't like the, the, you know, the public hears the retreat and it's not what they.
Going to a spa.
Yeah, yeah, it's not that.
Miss Lady.
Sorry, I just went to sleep.
Be in the gallery, put his shoes in.
Yeah, that's great, well, if if anything, I I think this captures everything we've talked about so far, but if anything else comes up, please let me know. We want to do a quick, I can, like, while we're, that's a goal, do a quick recess, five minutes?
I like, it's pretty narrow back there.
On your neck.
Yeah.
I'm sure you can move forward.
Okay.
All right, we are back, um, without objection, is everyone okay if we take action on item L four first?
Not at all.
Okay, great, um, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the SOBC certified contract for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine as presented.
Replay says Rebecca. So, thank you Dawn, thank you Rebecca, discussion?
I would like to say I am so happy it's twenty twenty-nine. And that the work uh from everybody was um valuable and I. Believe that our board relationship with with the teachers did help with this contract, and I look forward to continuing on building relationships. With them, they mentioned they wanted to have more meetings and 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 continue our relationship, which I a hundred percent agree with, so.
Fantastic, yeah, thank you for all your hard work and the team and and to the association and our. Staff as well, this was an awesome collaborative effort and it's great to be voting on this today. Okay, we will vote, Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
How about yes?
I'm leaving, I'm going to Ashland to talk about what I do for OSBA. I just happen to be a.
Yeah, yeah.
Bye.
Yeah.
Bye.
Oh, for the, um, yeah, which one was that?
We love you Dawn.
She's like, oh wait.
So we are, we're part of that, okay, we'll do that, we'll have her fix it, no, 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 I'm, I'm.
I know we like.
Um, okay, back to L one, resolution twenty-five seven, twenty-five dash seven. Superintendent signing authority.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-five dash seven superintendent signing authority for change order as presented.
Replay says Diana?
Diana, good.
Okay, Polly, thank you, thank you Diana, discussion? Okay, Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
How about yes? Twenty-five dash eight, uh, designation of local contract review board.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-five dash eight designation of local contract review board for twenty-five, twenty-six as presented.
It's seven now.
Thank you Polly, thank you Nancy, that was clear as one yet, um, any discussion? Okay, Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Diana? Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
How about yes? Twenty-five dash nine, free and reduced lunch.
I move to adopt resolution twenty-five dash nine, free and reduced lunch as presented.
Second.
Thank you Polly, thank you Diana.
I wanna say that I hope that we can maintain all these things, these students as we move into this year.
Uh, Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
I move, yes. Ready to contract.
I'm an actor for you.
Um, next meetings, we probably get this power through a lot, um, sorry, everybody, um. You elected me again, um. The the next meeting agenda, we kinda talked about, but anything else?
So we do have Culver Road on there, I was like, we've been done.
Yes, we do have Culver Road. What on the twenty-five dash ten?
That's it, right, twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine, SOBC.
We only have a ten.
We had a twenty-five, ten, but we did it in the consent agenda.
We did?
Oh, wow, above.
Yeah.
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 I wanted to talk about one of those.
Oh.
Is it too late?
No, go ahead. I mean, it, you can, you have a question?
No, it's, uh. It was item seven of the list.
Okay.
Appointing KDB as the auditor.
Okay.
Uh, if you recall, when the audit committee reported last time, and we talked about the D's. That had taken place, and. They've gone up dramatically, and if you look at our budget report in twenty-two to twenty-three, it was fifty-seven thousand. The next year went up by thirty-eight hundred, went up to sixty thousand nine hundred. And then there was a jump to seventy thousand, and probably what's in the budget this year is eighty thousand. So, uh, the last two years has been like ten thousand dollar hits, and. I will say this, KDB does an excellent job, we have a great relationship with them. Uh, their reports are readable, they're, I mean, they're excellent, they go great job, but. I I'm I'm looking at the money and saying, well, should we? Send this out and see if there's some others that might wanna bid on this sort of thing, or at least have a discussion with KDB and say, hey, guys. You know, it's getting out of hand.
I don't know what our rules are about doing this now, but do we need to move this to the next?
Uh, yeah, we can, he did, and I I apologize because we, I remember you mentioning that. And when Denise and I did the agenda, I failed to pull that off, and then, um, it was part of the consent agenda. But we can certainly bring it back for discussion, um, I think. The biggest thing driving those increases in costs are, we have so many more. Things that need to be audited now with the, with all the federal and with all the grants and federal programs and things like that, state grants.
Of course, the drug thing that they expressed during our meetings.
Right.
How great our records are. And how it's easier for them to audit.
Yeah.
So, it's easier, but.
Yeah.
And I also look at it from their standpoint, CPAs are hard, are. Are getting to be rarer, and rarer, and, and their costs are going up, I know that.
Yeah. Denise, can you, well, here's rules, we're talking about next, the next agenda, can you add an item to discuss?
Even during the work session, absolutely, yeah.
That'd be great, and I think, I'd love for Brent to be here too, to, and if the, and all that, but, um, yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, Rick, and we should.
Well, he could be able to find something out in two weeks, what's happening.
Uh-huh, yeah, for sure.
Or he has me. You know, one thing. I'm, I'm writing note for them.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Rick, good call out. Okay, thank you, um. It's all good, we're talking about next meeting's agenda, um, anything else? Okay, we are adjourned.
Can I take a picture of Benzos?
Oh, oh, it's not a problem, no problem.